This special JCN Town Meeting Tourism 2018 and Beyond is brought to you by the following sponsors. The Ministry of Tourism, the Nassau Paradise Island Promotion Board, Atlantis Paradise Island, and Bahama.
Welcome to our forum on tourism. Almost sixty years ago, the Bahamas government recognized that the economy of the Bahamas was, and it remains today, inextricably linked to the success of its primary industry tourism. There are many Bahamians who believe that the slogan "It's better in the Bahamas" means that Bahamians do not have to worry about the competition. They believe that the Bahamas is the most beautiful country on the planet, and that visitors will come to the Bahamas in large numbers no matter what. In recent years, the tourism destinations in the Caribbean have been increasing their market share, and some tourism professionals in the Bahamas are concerned that the stopover visitor count is not what it should be. In addition, recent advisories by the American and Canadian governments warning their citizens to avoid certain areas in the Bahamas have negatively impacted the product. Beyond this emphasis, we must put more emphasis on creating a better experience for our visitors in the Bahamas. And so tonight, we have gathered here to talk about tourism 2018 and beyond. Our panelists this evening include the Minister of Tourism, the Honorable Donisio Di Aguilah, the President of Bahama, Mr. Graham Davis, the Senior Vice President of Atlantis, Mr. Ed Fields, and Mr. Fred Munnings, who is representing entertainers here this evening. We're going to have opening remarks by each of the panelists, and following that, we would ask a number of questions on tourism 2018 and beyond. We begin this evening's conversation by asking Minister Di Aguilah to give us his remarks.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Jones, for having me on this panel and discussing a topic which is near and dear to this country. I don't need to reiterate that tourism is our number-one industry. It contributes two-thirds of the jobs that Bahamians have, and it generates the majority, the largest proportion, of our GDP. It's very important to the Bahamas, tourism. So I'm happy to report today, as we enter into 2018, that in my humble opinion, tourism is looking good. Tourism figures projections for 2018 are up by double digits, and the traveling public is very excited about the new products that have entered into our market. It would be remiss for me not to say that, of course, the leading charge for these robust numbers are the coming-on-stream of the Bahama property, which includes the Grand Hyatt, the SLS, and the soon-to-be-open Rosewood. The other anchor of our tourism product, of course, is Atlantis, which has been the engine of our tourism product since 1994, I believe. And they have introduced a lot of new products, a lot of interesting new ideas, and they have just renovated and brought back on stream the Royal Towers. So we have a rejuvenated, exciting product to offer visitors, and they are taking note. And as I said, tourism this year, we expect to see, certainly in the first six months of this year, our numbers indicate that we are experiencing double-digit growth from our core markets out of the United States. Seventy-six percent of our visitors come from the United States, so that is the market to which we are concentrating all of our marketing resources and ensuring that they continue to come in the numbers that we need them to come. I think Mr. Jones mentioned at the outset, the bumps in the road, I call them, with the advisories and warnings that have been issued against the Bahamas. And my message is this: 6.3 million visitors come to this country every year. And you can count on my two hands the foreign visitors that have a bad experience because of crime. Obviously, there are going to be some. But I think the Bahamas is a safe destination. Ninety-nine percent of our visitors come here, have a wonderful experience, go down to the fish fry, and don't have any problems. So I think sometimes we are our own worst enemy. Our headlines in our newspapers sensationalize crime, and that hurts us. So we have to be mindful of the fact that tourism is our number-one industry. What do we have to sell? We have to sell our destination. So everybody must be engaged in the marketing of this destination. As you look throughout the Bahamas, New Providence is doing well. The family islands are doing exceptionally well. The number of boutique properties that are coming on stream and the interest in those experiential vacations that the family islands offer are very attractive to certainly the millennial travelers. And we're seeing more than double-digit growth, well, high double-digit growth in the family islands. Of course, Freeport is a work in progress. The government has a number of projects that we are hoping in the very near future. And I know the Bahamian people have been promised this for quite some time, but we're working diligently to bringing those projects online. And certainly by the middle part, latter part of this year, we expect some positive news to report about the hotel product in Freeport. So, in summary, 2018, we expect to be an excellent year as you who are watching or listening to this show can contribute to tourism by continuing to deliver that exceptional customer service that our foreign visitors demand. And we are all in this together. We must all make the product that we deliver to foreign visitors. We must always be courteous, we must always be polite, we must always be helpful, and we must continue to innovate and create interesting things for our foreign visitor to do once they get here. So, things are looking good for 2018, Mr. Jones.
Well, thank you so very much, Minister, for your opening remarks. We now ask the President of Bahama, Mr. Davis, for his opening remarks.
Mr. Jones, thank you very much for the invitation to be here this evening. Mr. Di Aguilah, thank you very much as well for participating. And there are other guests here, Mr. Munnings, Mr. Fields, thank you.
Our audience this evening, it's a delight for us to be here this evening representing Bahama. I was on your show last year, and it was certainly a very productive visit. And we're encouraged to present back to the community that we have made tremendous progress since the last time I was on the show. We have successfully opened the Grand Hyatt in April of last year with 1,800 rooms. Our SLS opening happened on target in November of 2017. Our restaurants are successfully opening in a rapid succession, whether it be our Italian restaurant, Felia, which is a James Beard Award-winning chef and their Italian cuisine, to our Schwangbau with our exceptional Asian cuisine, Katsuya, global force in sushi and Japanese cuisine, our buffet restaurant, which has just opened as well, Regatta, over 300 seats, fantastic buffet experience, as well as some other restaurants, whether it be Cleo, Mediterranean, SLS, restaurants around the pools. Everything is opening on target. Our Rosewood is our crowning jewel to open up here in the late spring of this year as well. Already, local managers are being hired, you can see ads in the paper. We are making tremendous progress on ensuring that the additional $40 million renovation to Rosewood is done exceptionally well to create a world-class product with Rosewood when it opens. So we're on target. We've hired, we're just shy of 4,000 employees, which has made significant impact to the local community. And when, as I mentioned last year, that for every one job that we hire, there are six others that are either indirect or induced because of the employment of one to Bahama. So, you know, when you multiply that, you're really talking about, again, over 20,000 jobs. When you look at the impact that it makes across the Bahamas, for that impact to be significant, it's important that we continue to grow. We are looking to get up to over 5,000 jobs that we've made a commitment to, and we're well on our way. We are expecting to demolish here in the near future the Crystal Palace and create some additional family amenities and additional experiences for our guests. And I absolutely agree with Minister Di Aguilah in that we are on a global stage when it comes to competition. We're competing against guests that have an opportunity to fly practically anywhere in the world. And when you're competing against other Caribbean destinations and you're competing against destinations in the Pacific overseas, it is important that we create an exceptional experience in every way, whether it be at our restaurants, in our lounges, in our room accommodations. It starts at the airport and it ends when they depart. And every experience and encounter that our guests have in between, whether it be downtown, or it be on a beach, or it be walking across the street and encountering our incredible culture here in New Providence, it is absolutely critical that everybody embraces our travelers and guests that are here to experience the absolute incredible beauty and the absolute warmth and incredible culture that we have here in New Providence and throughout the Bahamas. So, you know, when we're competing and we're spending, that we launched in last November, $25 million in an advertising campaign that's reaching across the United States and abroad. We have over a million visitors every month getting onto our website to look at the opportunity to come to Bahama or the Bahamas. Nassau Paradise Island Promotions Board is spending over $10 million in promotions, and I know the Ministry of Tourism is, I think, 20 million is what the Ministry of Tourism is spending to market the destination of the Bahamas. Those dollars mean nothing if a guest comes here and has a bad experience. And so whatever we can do in the community and whatever we can do at our property, we're focused on training and hiring the very best to create those exceptional experiences and differentiating experiences. We're certainly wanting to collaborate, and we are already, with Atlantis, to grow the markets, to look at new destinations. We're adding Bahamas Air announced, and is flying already from Houston. We're pushed very hard, along with the Ministry of Tourism and PIPB, as well as us hoteliers, to get new airlifts. And I can tell you proudly that we've had great success. That this coming March and then in the next month, we'll have a 7% increase. We'll have over 5,000 flights a day, 5,000 seats a day, excuse me, coming into Nassau, into LPIA. We have larger aircraft from Delta. We have new airlifts coming in from Southwest. We have additional airlifts coming in from our partners across the U.S. And that's encouraging to see. The airlines are very optimistic. They're seeing the demand increase, and they're adding the flights as quickly as they can. We need 300,000 additional seats to ensure we have the capacity to bring guests to Bahama. And I can tell you quite satisfactorily that the work is in the progress and the flights are coming. And Ministry of Tourism, the government, the LPIA Airport are all very supportive to make sure that things are handled very smoothly. Again, that first-and-last impression is critical. So we're well on our way. We're well on our way to continue our investment here at Bahama. We are encouraged by the support we're receiving from the government today, the Prime Minister, the Ministry of Tourism, Department of Works, Department of Immigration. Everyone is being very, very supportive to ensure Bahama is successful. And we appreciate the community's outreach to support all of our different programs, our food and beverage outlets, our hotel. And again, we look forward to continuing to support with our Senior Vice President here of Government Relations and our community outreach, Sandy Sands, with our foundation, the Bahama Foundation, working very hard to ensure that we give back to the community, that we focus on what we can do on education. We have future programs coming up where we'll be embracing not only the higher education, but also at the lowest level, whether it be in art, in hospitality, and looking at a career of not servitude but service. And it's an honorable profession that I've been in for over 30 years. And we at the foundation, and Sandy and I and our team, are focused on uplifting and encouraging more citizens to become career-oriented towards the hospitality industry. It's a noble and one of the oldest professions. So that's part of our foundation work. Certainly focused with the Nature Conservancy and Bahamas National Trust specifically on conservation. We're focused deeply with them on what we can do as an organization to not deplete the resources here locally, but to add to the resources and do what we can to protect them. And that's a very important aspect. And then culturally, which is our third aspect of our foundation, is to focus on the culture and celebrate and work in many ways with our community to embrace and celebrate, share with our guests, and also support the local communities where we can. Thank you again very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Davis. Now we turn to the next side of our table, the panel here, and we ask Mr. Ed Fields for opening remarks. Ed Fields?
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones, and again greetings to my fellow panelists, Mr. Davis, the Minister, and Mr. Munnings. Atlantis continues to hold strong. We, just as a correction to the Minister, we just recently renovated the Coral Towers, not the Royal Coral Towers, and they're back on stream. We have several more rooms to come back on stream, which we hope to do in very early April. Our restaurant offerings, we continue to change and to upgrade those, incorporating more and more Bahamian concepts into our restaurant offerings. We are about to open up a new concept restaurant, Fish by Jose Andreas. We're going to be very proud of that restaurant. So we continue to do what we need to do to remain competitive, to hold our place in the market, and it's quite strong at this point. We, of course, have quite over 7,500 associates that are employed at Atlantis. And as Graham pointed out, the indirect impact to that is exponential. It continues to trickle down into the economy, not only through indirect jobs, but through entrepreneurial opportunities, whether it's in audiovisual, whether it's in event planning. There's a whole range of opportunities that Bahamians have done quite well over the number of years, and we're very proud of that. I won't go into the repetition of what is happening in the marketing and the airlift side. Graham has enunciated that quite well, and we're working together to make sure that that demand is created and to be able to facilitate that demand. Because it's one thing to create demand, but if they can't get to the country, then it's another story. We have the misfortune, I suppose, in terms of being an island, that where places like Orlando, 78% of the people can drive to, there's zero driving to the Bahamas. So we have to continue to work very closely with the airline, very closely with NPIPB, the airport, and Bahama, and other properties, to ensure that we continue to get the airlift. And as Graham said, we're seeing activity there. Where you don't see additional flights, you're seeing bigger aircraft. And we have to be very focused on that because if people can't get here, if it costs too much for them to get here, then that's a problem for us. To the point of the experience, yes, we all have to be engaged in this process. And I think for far too long, and I say this without being critical, I think we're somewhat, as a country, detached from the fact that tourism is our bread and butter. We know it, but we don't necessarily live it all the time, and we have to live it. And that goes full gamut, every single person. And it goes also to the point of realizing that tourism is not just about two hotels or three hotels or five hotels. It's about the destination. And I'm sure I'll repeat this again and again during the course of this show, but it's about developing product that is destination-oriented so that people come here, the hotels will benefit from that because when people want to come here for the purposes of enjoying our culture, enjoying our festivals, enjoying our food, enjoying our people, our product, then we won't have to worry about occupancy rates. From the perspective of downtown, which I also have some capacity there, we're doing all we can to make sure that that product is enhanced through a revitalized downtown, a city center that people can be proud of, not just for visitors, but for people who live here, our residents. I often say, you know, they didn't build the Louvre in France for tourists. Tourists enjoy it. And we want to create a lifestyle here for Bahamians, for residents, that visitors can then share, and that's our goal with downtown. So without echoing or doubly echoing the Minister and Mr. Davis, we're working together, and we call on our citizens, we call on our residents to understand that this is our bread and butter. We'll continue, as I'm sure the government of the Bahamas will continue to try to diversify, but until that day comes, this is what we have, and we need to focus all of our efforts on making sure that everyone wants to come here for the enjoyment of the Bahamas, for the enjoyment of the resorts, and for the benefit of the folks. Just one last point, and that is, we, like Bahama, we have continued and will continue to do. Our involvement in the community is, it's not just a matter of giving back. That's a very important element, but it's a part of us. We are part of the community. And so if we're going to succeed, the community and those who we touch have to feel that level of success. And so over the last, I think, 15, 20 years, we've given close to $35 or $40 million. And I think every single charitable organization, every educational institution have been touched by our capacity and our ability to contribute. So we'll continue to do that as a part of this community, and I think it'll make, especially in the areas of training, in the hospitality industry, the College, University of the Bahamas, culinary arts, we'll continue to reach out to develop, train people that can be a part of this industry for many, many years to come. So once again, Mr. Jones, I want to thank you for inviting me, and I'm sure it's going to be a very interesting conversation to see.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, Ed Fields, representing Atlantis. Now we ask Mr. Fred Munnings, who is involved in the entertainment industry and as well as the labor movement, to bring his remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. Good evening to the listening audience, both in studio and throughout the Bahamas and the extension of throughout, by internet, the world, actually. It's a pleasure to be with my distinguished panelist. Each of them, Mr. Jones, mentioned the word "the experience." The Bahamas' experience can best be appreciated and achieved by having that interaction with the cultural expressions of our country. The only element that makes us different from any other destination in this region and in the world is the cultural experience, whether that's in service, whether that's in the food, whether that's in the friendliness of the people, or whether that is in the performing arts, the visual arts, and other cultural expressions. I'm sure that all of you who were around in the '60s would know that entertainment was the driving force of the tourism product in the Bahamas throughout that two decades between 1945 and 1965. It was the experience that kept the visitors coming back to the Bahamas because they connected. You can only have an experience by having an emotional connection with the destination, with the people, with the music, with the arts, with the food, et cetera. We have failed miserably in the Bahamas by allowing our entertainment industry to become very dormant outside of the major resorts. The two major resorts that are here tonight, that are the major resorts, not only in the Bahamas, that I say in the Caribbean, offer a wonderful experience as a destination, as a resort. But what about the Bahamian experience, other than being in the Bahamas? When I look at the entertainment industry today, there is no place that I know that any visitor and/or Bahaman can go throughout this island or throughout this country and really experience the rhythm and the spirit of the Bahaman cultural expressions. You can't find it anywhere. And so I would submit this evening, Mr. Jones, and to my distinguished guests, that we need to form that partnership, Minister, between the government, between the private sector, and between the artist's community, specifically about the music and entertainment industries, where we can have that experience and have it at the level where these major resorts would not have a problem partnering with that out-of-hotel experience when they would encourage their guests to go and have that true, true Bahaman experience. We recently heard the advisory by the United States and the Canadian governments to say, "Do not go to Awaaki." Well, the Minister already touched on that. I have a serious problem with that because even though Awaaki may not be at the level that we would like for it to be as a Bahamian cultural experience, it is an experience that you can get that will have some basic elements of what the Bahamas experience is. And so I would like to, one of the things I would like to submit tonight is that we think about how we can create that partnership, how we can offer that same world-class presentation of our entertainment at the level that when you go to an Atlantis, you will have a world-class experience. There's no question about that. When you go to Bahama, you will have that same world-class experience as it comes to service, as it comes to the presentations, food. You talk about world-class chefs coming into the country. But what about when those guests go outside of those properties? We need to be able to create the kind of entertainment, the kind of experiences where we can have the same level of comfort, the same level of professionalism, and I dare say, I come from a background where that once was. As a matter of fact, the people look forward to going outside of the hotel and have those experiences because they could not get them in the hotels. When you were to go to establishments like the Cat and Phil, or the Zanzibar, or Silver Slipper, that was a true, true Bahaman experience, and people kept coming back for it because they made what I said, that emotional connection between that experience and between the destinations. And so this was the place where memories were made of. The Minister mentioned Freeport Grand Bahama. At one point, Grand Bahama was known as the magic city. It was a mecca of entertainment for the southeastern coast of the United States. And so, as I said, my focus this evening will certainly be where we can create that cultural exchange. Back in the day, the entertainers used to be the cultural ambassadors, where they would go to various countries throughout the United States, Canada, Europe, and they would be like pied pipers. And when they would have finished their presentations, the following year, those conventions would be pouring into the Bahamas. I believe we can do this again. We've had a number of conversations already with the Minister with regard to using that method to go and attract those businesses and attract those destinations, attract that convention business because I know that it can be done because once we make that connection, we have the greatest cultural country in this region. We are the gateway to the southern Caribbean region. The Bahamas could be the hub, if you will. Because when you look at the history of our country, you look at areas like Baytown, which is a historic community, and you have those connections with major groups in the United States. We just had Jesse Jackson down here who talked about the importance of linking the Bahamas with that Underground Railroad, if you will. Bahamas with that Underground Railroad, if you will. And when we look at our cultural icons, Sir Sidney Poitier, for example, the first Oscar winner from the Bahamas, Elwood Williams, Joseph Spence, the music of these artists, Bahaman artists are studied all over the world. And so once we make that connection and we create that incentive to drive that business to the Bahamas, I believe if we partner with the giants that we have this evening in the room with respect to these resorts, because the people can feel comfortable, they're coming to a beautiful resort, but they also could feel comfortable they're going to come and have one of the greatest experiences that they would have had in this part of the world.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Munnings. We're going to have a fine time tonight, I can tell. We are going to take our first break on this program as we talk about tourism in the Bahamas, examining it for 2018 and beyond. We take this break, we'll come back.